Are you ready? Welcome to the June 17 Board of Commissioner meetings. Please sign on cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. We'll have a moment in silence reflection and an apology of allegiance after that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much congratulations.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which it stands. One nation, under God. In the mission, liberty, and justice for all.
I misunderstood.
I just wanted to say it. We can head on to it. Next, we'll have the review and approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Backed up.
Taken by La Croix. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll have the hearings for the provisional update. And that was being from Ms. Cindy Moller, please.
Good morning, Commissioners Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. I laid out the memo this year in a little bit different format. Holly suggested something a little different because she had a hard time following what I had done. And we just wanted to make it maybe a little bit clearer. Hopefully, it'll help a little bit more when it comes to looking at the different taxing funds and the way the levy lands. So the first one that I worked through is the county consolidated. And you can see that the total available new tax dollars.
Ms. Cindy, you'll have to tell us what page and.
It's the very first page of the memo.
Thank you. Ron.
I should have numbered them, I'm sorry.
It's about doing that. It's okay, that way everybody's on the same page. Just tell us if you flipped the page or if you're doing anything else, ma'am. Thank you.
So with the current year CPI, which is 1.7, the new tax dollars would be $739,459. And then if you go down, I've got the current year growth and the available stored CPI. The total available new tax dollars, if we taxed the max that we could in county consolidated, would be $2,588,107. And then I did an option below, just to give you an idea. If we used just the current year growth and current year CPI, our levy would be $3.50 per 100,000 less than it was last year.
Wow.
That's kind of exciting news. And then the estimated reserves for general fund would be at 25%, which is also exciting news to see that back up.
You did awesome, Ms. Cindy.
That is thanks to the departments that all submitted the budget like you requested and the underspent budget last year to help build that reserve again.
Okay.
The second option, I did use all.
Ms. Cindy, we have a question from Commissioner DeSanto.
Sorry.
To be clear, that means no using the stored CPI.
That is correct.
And we still said 3.50 per 100,000. Beautiful.
Yep. The next option on page two is to use all of the available tax dollars, which would include the stored CPI. And that would increase the levy $2.40 per 100,000. And it would give us a reserve of 21.37% in general fund.
Any questions on that?
And then the other option that I threw in there was to use only growth in the general fund or in the consolidated levy. And that would decrease the levy by 11.2% and leave us with 19.37% reserves.
And our goal is try to hit 20%, am I incorrect, on board this year for our reserves?
That'd be great.
Okay.
And what was the reserve last year?
I think we were sitting at about 14%.
Yes.
Okay.
We did end a little bit better. And I know I have that worksheet and this stuff. We did end a little bit better than I had projected during budget time last year. 19 ended a little bit better than that, so, which helps progress that a little bit further on when we get to the end of 2021.
Yep.
So the next levy that I went over is the county fire levy. And they have no more stored CPI for the county fire levy. So the maximum new tax dollars that could be generated is $6,626. Using the current year growth and CPI, the levy would be changed, it would be reduced by 20 cents per 100,000.
Okay.
And leave them with a 65.16% reserve. Using growth only, it would reduce it by 30 cents per 100,000 and leave them with a 64% reserve or 63.67%, sorry, read down too far. And then if we used only CPI, the levy amount doesn't change just because it's such a small amount, but reserves would increase to 64.12%.
And we're looking at other areas for, with the county fire, have a meeting tonight of trying to help fund some of their reserves and some of the things they need. But we will talk about that another time when we move forward and we know we have some funds, so.
Right. And then along with the county fire, I did type you up a paragraph in regards to those reserves because I know there's been some desire to increase the reserves for county fire for equipment and that sort of thing. And rather than maintaining such a high level of reserves in the actual fire fund, I suggested that you maybe set up an assigned reserve within the general fund and budget every year like we do for IT equipment, like the sheriff does for his bus. Budget a little bit every year to keep in an assigned reserve within the general fund. And that does two things. It doesn't tie that money specifically to fire in the fire fund. It gives us a little bit more flexibility there on if an emergency would happen and we needed that money in the general fund, the board could make a motion and then use that money for that purpose. It also leaves our reserves in the general fund, assigned reserves, a little bit higher, which helps support our reserve when it comes to looking at our bond rating.
That's true. I forgot about the bond rating.
Yeah.
Kind of like we use for highway and our other reserves that we have that are assigned, right?
Yeah, all of the other, the funds that are basically held as restricted, that doesn't count towards anything when it comes to looking at our reserves or bond ratings.
Can you kind of explain like you did to Gary and I in case people forgot or Ron's knew with some of this about what the assigned means and what that means for our audit and those kinds of things, Cindy? I don't think.
Unassigned is funds that have absolutely no designation to them at all. Within our fund balance, we have several assigned fund balances. And that means that you guys have, or a board at some point has made a motion to create an assigned fund balance, such as the bus, to hold money to accumulate for a future project. That money by motion can be removed and used for something else. If it's restricted funds, then it has to be specific for that purpose.
So, and then you also said that's what helps our bond rating. Can you explain that?
Right. When they look at the bond rating, they look at the amount of reserves. And so anything, you know, 20% and above is obviously a good reserve. So that's where we want to, that's where we want to go. And the only thing that's really kept our bond rating up where it was, even though our reserves in general fund were slipping, was the fact that Highway Department had $10 million plus in their assigned reserve within that fund. So that was used when they calculated our last bond rating. Well, the next two years, we're going to completely wipe that out with Sheridan Lake Road and Rochford Road. That funds is going to, or that assigned fund balance is going to be down to probably a million dollars or less. And so we really need to make sure that we keep our general fund balance up so when they look at it, we've got a good rating.
So we'll make the sheriff have a bunch of assigned stuff in his reserves this year. That'd be a five-year plan, Mr. To.
Yep, he's starting over on the bus this year, so that is his five-year plan.
He's going to have a slow bus and a fast bus now. There you go. Did you understand that? Commissioner Roskin, did you understand how the bonding works with the assigned and everything that she explained or do you need to?
I think we're okay.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
And I think I gave you that sheet during our retreat, too, that explained each of those fund balances, what they mean. So.
Yes, ma'am.
We can always get you that again if you need it.
And then the next sheet actually explained some of the stuff about the assigned fire reserve, a little bit more explanation on the fire reserve.
Does anybody have any questions about how that would work? Okay. Then the next page, I moved into the library levy and broke out what the total available new tax dollars is, $16,099. And if we just use the growth and current year CPI plus $181,975 of our available opt-out, the change is $3.20 more per 100,000 this year than it was last year. Last year, we actually went back and used a little bit less to use some of the reserves from the library fund. So that was decreased last year and it'll be going back up this year.
Okay, and that is sustainable at this rate of how we're doing it right now? I know Julie set it up when we redid some of the library stuff a couple of years back and said it'd be sustainable about how we were doing it at this time. So I appreciated that. And then you did do an explanation that maybe we should do something different, but at this time, I think we're good. Am I correct, Holly, on what we said with the levy? Okay.
Yeah, I did explain down below that if we used all of the available tax dollars, then we would just reduce the amount of the opt-out that we have available. So the levy amount will stay the same, the reserve will stay the same. But in doing that, then we can build on that actual levied tax dollars without using as much of the opt-out. And then if someday something happens and they say, hey, we got to renegotiate this contract, and it would just help so that we have all of the available opt-out or, you know, more of that available opt-out to meet that need if we have to.
So, just a question. With the fire reserve or fire fund, they reduce their opt-out, but then what they did is also, or maybe it was their levy, maybe it's the same. But then when they did that reduction, they couldn't hire it up again without asking the voters to.
To opt out, correct.
So.
Correct. So if we continue not using all of the available tax dollars, as that goes, as our obligation to the libraries goes up, we're going to use more and more of our opt-out. And then there could come a point where we would need to opt out an additional 100,000 or whatever to meet that need.
Yeah, just making sure we don't reduce it in case we need it for.
Right.
You know.
Right.
Trying to raise it and then have to go to the voters.
That's why I'm suggesting that you use all of the available tax dollars in that levy.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions on that part?
So you're saying, one more question, Ms. Cindy. So the stored CPI would be one of those that you want to use all of the tax dollars of?
Yep. In the library fund, I would recommend doing that, yes.
Everybody understand that? Okay. Thank you.
Like I said, that doesn't change what the levy will come out to be because we'll just reduce the opt-out amount.
Okay.
Then we move into the unorganized road fund. And the unorganized road fund doesn't carry a reserve because all of the revenue that's generated through unorganized road is subsequently transferred and an operating transfer to the road and bridge fund. So the total available new tax dollars through unorganized road is $102,083. If we just use growth and CPI this year, the levy will be reduced by $2.50 per 100,000. And like I said, all of that money that's generated in that fund is transferred to the road and bridge fund. So I did give you an estimate of what the road and bridge fund reserve will look like at the end of 2021. And we did get an updated budget and revenue report from Highway after I had completed this. So it's 5.49 instead of 5.32, so not a huge change. And the same thing here, if you use the growth current year CPI and the stored CPI, you're gaining all of the available tax dollars for road and bridge, basically. And the levy would only increase 20 cents per 100,000. And considering they're using so much of their reserve, I actually would suggest that you do that. I know that's unpopular because I don't ever want to raise the levy, but considering the need for road and bridge, I think that would be a wise move.
So say again, you want us to use the growth current CPI in everything above?
Yep, yep. 102,000 of that, yes.
And that takes it to $2.50?
It.
Or 20 cents?
20 cents per 100,000.
Okay.
Very minimal increase.
Okay, so you want us to do option two as your.
Mm-hmm. And that would be my suggestion. Does anybody have any questions?
These are hard to please today. Any questions, board? Your.
Reminder that as we sat here a year ago, when we started, we saw our reserves at about 13%. And our goal was to try to increase that close to 2% last year. So, you know, if we're able to take that up, that'd be, that's great news for the county. I think by state law, we're allowed to have up to 40%. I'm not looking that we're going to get there anywhere soon, but at the same time, when you even look at 40%, 40% doesn't carry you too long when you end up in real emergencies. This year could have been one of those.
So Cindy, tell me why we took it to 20?
To support the bond rating.
Okay.
That's why we want to look at keeping that up. The other reason that we want to look at keeping that up is cash flow.
Thank you.
If we did happen to have a crisis where tax dollars didn't come in, we would, we would have been hurting on the cash flow side of things this year.
Thank you.
And I will say that at the end of 2019, we were sitting at 14.73%. So we were able to increase that sum over where we were at the end of 18.
Nice. Any other questions for Cindy?
Good.
Anything else you're sharing?
My budget, if you'd like to.
You have to look at yours?
Go over, go over that. We can, we can do that later. I don't, I don't mind at all.
I thought we were decreasing that by 20%.
Um, well, we are decreasing election budget next year because we're not anticipating having such a huge election next year.
Go ahead, Ms. Cindy.
And I'm sure you guys all have my memo. I'm not going to sit and read it word for word, but of course, I did follow the board's direction for looking at or how people would be placed on the Gallagher wage scale. So that is where I placed my people. So that was the increase in salaries. You'll also notice that there was a little bit higher change in that, but that is because from the IRS audit, we learned that we have to pay our poll workers through payroll, not through professional services. So that's been reduced and then salaries were increased due to that change.
Any questions on Cindy's budget?
So Cindy, there's no, it used to be a $600 limit on that. There's, there's no dollar amount on that anymore.
No, you used to have to send out a $10.99. If you paid them through accounts payable, send out a $10.99 after $600. And like I said, during the IRS audit, they said, no, anytime you're paying somebody like that wages, you have to pay it through payroll. And yes, it's caused a lot more work in our office to gather all of the information from all the poll workers and enter all of that into payroll to get them paid. But we're getting it done.
Do you recall how many poll workers it took for?
Oh, my gosh.
This election?
Hundred and some, and I can't remember exactly what it was because I know Lori tried to fill, you know, to bring in an extra person to help wipe down and keep things a little more.
I got to talk to her about that. I didn't get that person in mind.
Uh-oh. Were you out there wiping things down during Election Day?
Yep.
That was my assignment then.
Okay, okay.
Person to wipe down.
Oh, yeah, well, we had several.
You're the cleaning guy?
Everybody took turns.
Made Gary do it. I won't tell you why because it sounds mean. Just kidding.
So yes, my overall election budget will be down next year. We're only anticipating that we'll have to do the schools' election next year since the city has changed the, their pattern on how they elect people to every other year so it matches with the primary, which is really nice for us. Hopefully, they'll think that, too, and we'll change it back. So, anybody have any questions on my election budget?
Cindy?
Yes.
Accumulated billing revenues, why are we not getting the interest rebate on the 2010B bonds?
Because we don't have that interest rebate because we refinanced those bonds last year.
Oh, okay. Thanks.
How's our health?
I thought they might have changed something in the legislation.
No, no, we just don't, we don't have to apply for those anymore because we refinanced them.
How's our healthcare trust fund? Are we doing okay in that sense, you guys, for keeping ahead of the game on that?
I did recommend increasing that budget. It seems like every year, we either have to do a budget supplement or we overdraw the budget at the end of the year because of the claims, you know, the longer the year goes up, the higher the claims seem to be. So I did recommend that we increase that budget, but I think we'll have the revenues to support that as well.
I said that just for that reason and just to make sure you covered, like you said, we usually had to take money out.
Right.
Of reserves in order to cover it.
Yep, yeah, and last year, you can see, we were overdrawn by $750,000.
Yes, ma'am, that's why I asked you about the.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we did have the overcollected revenues on the other side and so.
So we're okay with 376 to cover it for next, next year?
Hopefully.
Okay.
If you can predict how many people are going to be sick, I want your crystal ball.
Well, what's been the high, what's been the low, you know what I'm saying? That's usually how you.
I kind of looked at that, and that's where I came up with the 7, or the 376 is that hopefully that should be able to cover it. And I do think we need to look at that, you know, before final budget is approved. I think we'll need to sit down and do a little cash analysis on the healthcare trust and see where they're sitting towards the, you know, end of August. Give us a better picture.
Did we change anything on deductions and all that kind of stuff? Maybe I should ask. Okay. I didn't know if you guys did any of that. I know it didn't come forward, but I didn't know if you were working on it or something had changed.
No, it's my understanding they're going to leave the insurance rates the same.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else you need me to go through line by line or are we good?
So your change is 574,658 this year? No, that's coming in building bonds, sorry.
Yeah, it depends on which one you're looking at because I did, you know, I did the courts, then there's the auditor's budget, which I was able to decrease my insurance or felt that I had room enough to decrease the insurance. So even that budget is, is down. The salaries going on to Gallagher was a very minor change for my employees in that respect.
When I looked at the, when Holly sent out, what was it, Holly, where we had the paper where it showed the changes, meaning how much people have spent on their budgets, the court systems throughout, because remember, we haven't been having court or they've been working on their stuff at home and not really having a lot more of the court cases. It was down a lot. So does that mean, I guess, crystal ball again, because are they going to start the court system or are they going to use it all? Because that's, that was considerable amount that wasn't used at this point through a lot of the court systems of attorneys and.
Oh, you're, you're actually referring to the court-appointed attorneys on the abuse and neglect?
Yeah.
Budgets, yeah. I don't have those in front of me. The courts will be presenting those.
Okay.
I know they did contact me and they wanted to increase that, but with the board's direction to leave, to freeze operations, I told them to leave that as they had it for 2020, as the approved 2020 was, but that they need to talk to you guys about increasing it. Because there again, almost every year, we end up doing a budget supplement to support those court-appointed attorney fees.
And just depending on what happens in the future for court systems and COVID or how they're doing their systems.
Yeah.
That's going to change again. And then they should have a considerable amount turning back this year, maybe if they're not going to move forward and, and we keep having the COVID issues. But that might need to be carried over for the next year in a certain extent.
It will be carried over in the reserve if it's not spent, but then you can supplement.
Okay.
Next year if you need to. But I really would recommend doing a supplement or not doing a supplement, but increasing that budget for next year so that we don't have to come in and do a supplement.
Okay, and then we just take those extra and put it in general fund so it's a lot easier for you?
Yeah.
All right.
Yep. It's less, it's less paperwork.
Okay, thank you.
To do it that way.
Any other questions for Ms. Cindy?
Cindy, on the 2021 request for salaries, if I'm reading that right, it's 336 to 18 for the auditor.
For auditor's budget? Yeah. Well, it looks like my formula is way off on that one.
What's that?
Not as bad as I thought. And like I said, with where my people were sitting and where they'll go on Gallagher, there just wasn't that much of a, of a change.
How many employees are in your office?
Eight currently. I do have budgeted for nine.
So that 336 to 18, that would reflect nine employees.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One thing we did.
I'm amazed how you kept that consistent.
That's only your auditor budget, not your election salaries.
Oh, excuse me. Yep, Holly's right. That's only my auditor budget. And I think I have.
Five and a half.
Five and a half in the auditor budget and three and a half in election budget.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, I was just.
Combining the two together.
Okay.
And one thing we forgot to tell you about, and I don't know if you noticed, your sheets that are in your book, it should tell you how many FTEs each department has. Am I correct, Holly?
Yes, yes. This year, Commissioners, you have in the front of your books.
Holly, your mic, please. Take this one.
You'll have the one on the top that has four-year 2021 budget planning cycle. They're black and white. This is the census that the departments filled out with their current positions. Also, in the front of your book, you're going to have a packet that has the Gallagher-colored information on it. This will be the positions that the departments will be going to next year. So you can see new titles and everything like that. So the numbers won't necessarily match, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to go through them with you.
This will have everything for next year, basically what we need, and this is what they have this year.
Correct.
Based on the seven step, right?
Correct.
Cindy, what's your opinion of the switch and order to Gallagher? Do you think it's going to be better in the long run?
No.
I should have never asked.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wondered.
And I don't like the seven step. I don't like the fact that if I have an employee that's been in the office for a year, they're going to get a higher percentage of a raise than the person that's been there for 20 years. I don't like it.
Well, if this works out in two or three years and we go to the matrix part of the Gallagher, I think it's going to, this, this is where it's going to probably start being easier for you to give employees that deserve it their fair increase and employees that don't accordingly.
Hopefully, it will. I also don't like that the steps aren't uneven because it, it doesn't allow us an easy way to budget for the board to, to say, yeah, let's go ahead and do that next year and we can take last year's salaries and go, everybody's going to move one step and it's one and a quarter percent. You just add that up and you've got an idea of what salaries is going to cost you. With Gallagher, everybody's everywhere, so you have no idea. Every department literally has to go in and look at every employee and where they're going to be in order to know what their salaries are going to be increased. It's my opinion.
It's good to study them employees a bit.
What's that? Nothing.
Thanks for your honesty.
Well.
That is a struggle. I think that is a struggle when, just the way you explained it, it was easy this way.
I said that, you know, earlier and in department head meetings. John wanted to know which one we wanted to vote on, the seven or nine, and I said none. That's my opinion.
You can have an opinion.
That's right.
That's your job. Any other questions? Anything else?
So Cindy, if I'm reading this right, on your auditor's budget, you're going to be $175,000 revenue-wise under what your projected budget is, so you'll be looking for that out of, out of the general fund, right?
Yes, that's correct. And that's because we won't have the city election. We won't be getting reimbursed for that. That's why our revenues are down.
Gotcha.
Good job on the budget and your explanation on that first part, too, Cindy. Good job on the um budget and your explanation on that first part too, Cindy. Yes, very helpful to figure out kind of that analysis at the beginning instead of, okay, what, what do we really have for numbers, so. Any other questions for Ms. Cindy? Looks like uh Mr. Barry Tice is up. I can see that reduction already.
Good morning.
Good morning, Barry.
I'll just highlight a few of the uh pieces to 2021 budget and I'll stand for questions. As I highlighted on here, we did not make a change going into 2021. Over the past few years, when it comes to what we refer to as the client lienable line item, we use that as an area where we can reduce some of the expenses because that covers the economic assistance, medical uh medications, rent, utilities, emergency hospitalizations, and part of this, of course, for not reducing that anymore going into 2021 is because the increased need for economic assistance, which, you know, we anticipate will be a very long road. So that's always the, that line item is always the uh, has the highest number, of course, within our budget, and that has not changed in many years. To answer the question about the association fees, that's three hundred dollars for our veteran service officers. They're required to be members of the South Dakota Veteran Service Officer Association. We have two veteran service officers. The last thing where it looks like on our budget there was an increase, but we shifted this uh because of the eighty-five hundred dollars in the software budget. It's an accounting, um, it's my understanding it's an accounting change, so we were asked to move the dollars from maintenance agreement to software, so those are yearly costs for items such as Office 365, the virtual desktop office, the VetraSpec Veterans Program, QuickBooks, File Director, and the Office Telephone System. It's, so it's really maintenance fees from the companies. And then lastly, the thousand dollars uh for training for spring and fall conferences, the South Dakota Welfare Association. Um, and this, of course, is regarding our travel. We've reduced our uh travel again more from previous years, and that's anticipating um in early July, they'll make a decision on our veteran service officer training that they're required to attend every summer in August. It's the second week in August or third week. They go for five days. Um, and the South Dakota uh Department of Veterans Affairs will make that decision in early July, is my understanding, like right after uh, I believe it's the sixth or seventh of July, so we'll know um if those costs would be in there. And beyond that would be if the South Dakota Association of County Officials decides to move forward with having a um September conference and what those look like as well, or I'm sorry, when we look at, when we look at 2021, if these conferences will continue or if they'll do them virtually or whatever that might be. And then the only other shift uh is regarding the, of course, the wages and what that looks like, and part of why we have what I would consider minimal impact, and with these changes over the past few days, it's twelve thousand eight hundred and seven dollars is the change when we talk about if the steps go back into place for 2020, carrying over into 2021. We have a long-term employee of 29 years who will be retiring in September. We have an employee of 10 years that resigned um in April. And so, given the situation we're in right now, um with the recent resignation, we have not filled that position yet. We anticipate filling that once we're back to the new normal within our office, and so some of these pieces, we're trying to figure out with our long-term employee. That's a assistant director position, and we don't know if that will be filled with another assistant director position, so we're really trying to use the crystal ball on this to figure out what this looks like going into 2021, but we're not certain what that will be.
Did you plan according on your budget? Probably, because you don't, is Gallagher kind of comparable for what you changed um that title to be and, and, you know, where that person's at now that's retiring and the one that had left?
Yes, we, we factored that into the budget, so um the piece with that is, of course, they would start um lower on the scale than uh the individual in that current position, so that's been all factored in there as well.
But you haven't changed like the position title, so it would be a little bit different?
Yeah, we're still working through that. Um, as a matter of fact, there's a email on my desktop this morning from John regarding some of these pieces, so so we're kind of maneuvering through a very odd time uh with many variables occurring, so. And then uh the last, the last piece to this, and as I notified you on a couple of days ago, you know, we've been fortunate in 2020 to have this uh, these different donations, essentially, I shouldn't say essentially, they are donations that have been made to Pennington County and Pennington County Health and Human Services by these foundations to help during this time, which is a huge benefit to our community and to Pennington County taxpayers because we can use these funds, we can leverage these funds. This is money not coming out of um county dollars. Now I say that because when it comes to revenue for Health and Human Services, there is not a lot of revenue to be had by economic assistance. We will continue to look at other grant options. We're always working with the sheriff's office and other entities to identify potential funding sources. But that's really, that again is one of those things, it's hard for us to anticipate what's gonna happen in 2021 when it comes to foundation assistance and other uh means of, of funding sources. Now, with some of these changes we've made during this COVID time and Health and Human Services really becoming the central intake point for multiple services in our community, um and that's kind of been a um coordinated effort by the nonprofits and government entities, they like, everybody agrees and likes the work that's done through Health and Human Services and the way our staff does it, and so I say that because I believe that could provide us some opportunities in the future when you start maximizing grant funds and foundation funds is really finding those central organizations that manage the funding and um disperse the funding. So, you know, it'll be uh, 2021 will be an interesting year when it comes to what this economic assistance looks like, because we really, we place a high priority on divergent programs, and again, working with the sheriff's office and the judicial system um as well as the behavioral health needs. But a lot of our time has been focused on this economic assistance and shifting some employees over to help with the increased demand, so we'll see how that goes. And I know I don't, I don't wanna get stuck on what 2020 looks like now, but that really is going to forecast what I think our future holds.
All right, Barry. Under revenues, you don't show any of these grant funds?
There's.
Because I see that the Helmsley Trust, we haven't received anything since 2018?
So the Helmsley Trust was the one-time grant, and there's a little, there's right around eighteen hundred remaining in that grant, because we spent almost the entirety of it when we paid the consultants for the report that was provided to us for the study in October, so.
Okay.
That's not an ongoing funding source.
What about Vikurovich and MacArthur?
So Vikurovich, um, we're always very gracious to, um, this year we're still in the uh, still have funding remaining from our, what I would call our 2020 um discretionary grant plus COVID dollars, so um Vikurovich has given us just over a hundred thousand dollars um for 2020, eighty of which was the discretionary grants that in previous years we've applied for, typically that funding, in some years it's gone away, or I shouldn't say gone away. We've spent it by the end of December and then we apply based on when their board meetings are. Um, I would anticipate us applying for another grant in 2021. I, I don't know where, how far these dollars will carry over into 2021 or if they will.
I guess what I'm asking is, how come you don't show those dollars in your revenue?
So for, because we don't know if we're going to apply or not.
Okay.
Um, it's all based on what money we have, what money might carry over to 2021, so typically their board meetings are they, they're December, March, they're quarterly, um, the end of the summer, and then um early fall, and so depending on what the need is and where we believe Health and Human Services might be able to make the biggest impact in our community, then that's how we adjust those grant amounts. Um, you know, we've gone from twenty-five thousand to eighty thousand over the past decade. The same would hold true Commissioner DeSanto with Community Development Block Grant Funding. And it sounds like there's some new funding options coming to the city here pretty quickly, uh, which would help with rent assistance and some past due utility assistance, so that might be funding. We currently access through a different grant. We might be able to apply for that and that might carry over as well.
Correct.
But we don't have any, this is the date we apply, this is how much we apply for.
I'll probably find this out on Friday at our meeting, but have we secured any sort of commitment from one of the great benefactors of our Care Campus Monument Health? Have they made any kind of?
So that would be a conversation with Sheriff Tom, uh, because Care Campus falls under his his supervision. We just happen to be a partner within that.
Right.
Of course, I've never speak on behalf of Sheriff Tom, but I am very confident that he has worked very hard.
I know he has.
Many others um with Monument Health, and I would imagine like all the organizations across the city in the United States, everybody's having to make adjustments to their budgets, so it'll be interesting to see what funding is available.
Right. Okay.
I can say, you know, I, I, I was on the Community Block Grant Committee for, I think, I don't know, six years, somewhere's around there. And I know our focus, we always seen Health and Human Services as a good uh place to invest the money. And I know the last couple of years that I was on it, we started to focus more on getting more of the bang for our buck, which means, you know, we were getting several smaller requests and we decided we needed to combine and make bigger portions to uh some of the applicants in order to get more done. Instead of ten thousand here, ten thousand there, you know, we only had in one fund like two hundred and fifty thousand. And you split it up, you're really not doing a lot of good with providing a, a one example is a, a shelter around a garbage can that a, a nonprofit needs to, to cover up where we were investing more, and I think a lot of our nonprofits are, are focusing that way. And I think Barry has done a good job of communicating with our, our community leaders, our nonprofits are, are faith-based and being able to explain what our needs are and taking that dollar and helping more people more dramatically than a lot of other agencies do.
Say Barry, uh, I notice on the professional servicing fees, that's about twenty-nine percent of the total budget. If I'm reading that right, five oh eight, three hundred?
So that is the piece I referenced when it comes to um the
I guess my question, just, I just wondered what, what all that encompassed as far as professional services and fees?
So the included within that is the client lienable um line item, so that's the economic assistance for rent, utilities, medications, medical. I'm sorry, it took me a second to um look at that. So that's where that number is so high, because that makes up the twenty-eight percent of our uh budget.
Right. So what, what variables, if, if, what would change that to go up or what would change it to go down, just out of curiosity?
So that eighty-five hundred dollar change is, those are the fees that were included that were in the software budget previously.
Okay.
So that's an accounting rule? Would that be the right?
For us to charge it to the proper line item, yes.
Can, can you put it under something besides professional servicing fees? I know that's what it is, but because it's so high, can there be like some kind of explanation, maybe Barry might be easier at the end or in between or something on one of your pages?
Sure.
To explain what the five oh eight, three hundred is, you, you know, that way every time you won't look and go, okay, what is, why is that so high? And you won't have to explain it every time, because you do some amazing stuff with it uh as well, so it's kind of nice to know as a commissioner, um, what kind of things you do with the five oh eight, three hundred. Maybe that sounds strange in one sense, but I think the other, it uh, for new commissioners that don't know what you do, um, or just us, that it looks so high if we forget, just some kind of explanation when you have um something that high in your budget? Does that sound kind of different?
Madam Chair, to break that down on this budget format, we don't do that because in the accounting world, we only budget down to the line item, which is the 422, the professional fees and services.
Okay.
Within our software, we do break that down farther. So when he submits his numbers to the auditor's office to plug into the software, he does break that down between client lienable and um, oh, there's several different ones that he has under 422 that he does track.
I don't know if you'd have to break it down in, in that far for where every category goes and how much money goes in those categories, but just a basic explanation um once in a while, because again, um, when you have new, you see what I'm saying? Wouldn't be a breakdown of, you know, each, each category, just like, you know, our, when you see four twenty-two, the five oh eight, three hundred is used for, because I don't think, like I said, when I came into Pennington County, everything that somebody does. And so professional service fees and stuff in other people's is a lot different. It's like twelve thousand dollars or, you know, fifteen. And that's probably why Ron's like calling crap.
Like on this narrative right here, this two-page narrative, if there is, you know, the uh line four twenty-two, these are the service, this is what would be include, I don't need dollar amounts, just so that I better understand what health and.
You're looking for footnotes for just.
Right, just so that I better understand, because when you got twenty-nine percent, I just curious, uh, I'm sure it's all good, but I just uh trying to get a better understanding of that, so.
Well, and to help justify your comments, Commissioner Ross Connect, as you saw, it took me a few seconds, because I hesitated on that just because the reports I look at every month are in finer detail, so I know what client lienables are and the software piece, and then when it's lumped into professional services and fees, it obviously took me a second to.
It would probably relate to a lot of those meetings that we attended with uh the uh Pennington County Housing redevelopment, so Health and Human Services uh, that would where you get the, where, where the rent assistance and all this comes in.
Um, totally separate from Pennington County.
No, I understand, but.
Pennington County Housing.
You attended that because.
We wanted to know where to spend.
You were indirectly involved in.
Yes.
Housing and whatnot.
Yes, and um, we just had a conversation with some individuals uh that did an interview with us yesterday, and we always emphasize that Health and Human Services, I consider it the fulcrum of the community, because we're constantly doing these different things, so the participation in um the Pennington County Housing meetings, and we're always trying to maximize these dollars and identify these other funding options, and so.
Well, I appreciate your assistance on that. Well, I appreciate your assistance on that, I don't know if we were successful or not, but I.
But bottom line, just, just a narrative for new commissioners and others, again, if, if I came in. As a new commissioner and seeing, you know, professional fees, and again, it also helps to figure out as a new commissioner, what you do. Um, remember, because they come in, they have a few months and then we do a budget. So when they see some of this, um, it also helps explain, um, what your, what your department does and then they can ask you about. What's rent assistance, what's that mean, what's that mean, so, um, there also can help you, um. And other people in the community about what you do, Barry, so it's, it's not just about a budget, sometimes it's about what the money's spent on to explain to. Um, the citizens about what you do, so it's a plus both ways, so that was a good point.
Yeah, I'll have a better grasp when we get to, uh, the direct equalization.
Are there any other?
He doesn't want to harass you and he wants to harass Shannon, which is always a lot fun, just kidding. You do an awesome job, um, your group has done an amazing job this year with all this COVID. And, uh, just raising money and helping people, um, pretty awesome, Barry, and then you've had a few hiccups, uh, in between there. And then, um, that's been pretty hard on you in some of those areas, so, um, we appreciate everything you and your team do here. And you do spend the money wisely, Barry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
Thanks.
Thanks, Barry.
Have a nice day.
You as well.
Equalization, aren't we reducing him and making him work and get out in the field a little more?
My budget is reduced.
We're reducing your, I thought we reduced your pay yesterday considerably, so that should have helped.
The auditor just told me, good job.
She was trying to be nice. He's OCD, so if it isn't like, um, to the detail, it'd be a miracle sending.
My, my budget, uh, for next year is reduced, but it's not so much, uh, what I did. I, I gotta say, uh, I told you, I have a, a couple of very experienced, uh, long-term employees that are leaving. And we'll be replacing them with new people that make less money, uh, so I, I wish I could keep. Uh, more experienced people, I wish I could pay more, but that's the reality of it, so that's the, the largest change in my budget and then the other item is. Uh, we're not budgeting to replace a, a vehicle next year, we will have to replace vehicles, but. We're gonna, we're gonna get to next year without it, so that saves the money.
So when you reclassify too, um, when you're doing your job descriptions, um, there isn't much of a change on that either. Remember with the Gallagher? Cause we're giving them closest to the next step, that kind of thing, uh, that doesn't change much of what your budget's doing for anybody you might hire or that you. Have had before.
It, it doesn't change my budget much, I got a complaint with, uh, John that I'm gonna get at when we're done with, uh, these hearings. But it doesn't change my budget much.
John, you're not popular today.
John's taking some heat today.
On the Gallagher, he's gonna take heat, that's unfortunate in one sense and it's changed, John, so it's not you personally.
The, the complaint I got is, is the, the entry level pay for our appraisers is, uh, is down. Uh, I think we've got, uh, a good idea for a, a fairly good fix on that, but I work with John on that later.
Any questions for Shannon?
No.
On the, uh, twenty, if I'm reading this right, twenty one employees, full-time employees.
We were normally staffed at twenty two, a year ago, the, uh, the commission asked for budget cuts. And, uh, we reduced one employee, um, thought we could, uh, get by with, uh, one less appraiser. And then we had, uh, a couple of experienced appraisers quit and all we had was brand new ones, I wish we had that one back. Uh, so we're still budgeting for twenty one, at some point I'm gonna get back up to twenty two, but not, not.
So stabilization would be twenty two?
Where's your tie?
I think there's a good candidate down there. Got a good candidate right over here.
You need a job.
I'm paying attention.
Anything else? You're good, wow.
Thank you.
I was hoping they'd give you a little bit.
Note, uh, Deb said I am good.
Hannah, have you got some hearings today?
Yes, uh, we, uh, we have two hearings today, one of them, uh, was a house and then the, the other one. Um, I'd like to make fun of Ron, but I was told that this is recorded. So property you went out to look at, uh, the one now this morning that was, well, they're both houses, the one this morning. Uh, the property owner didn't even call in. I expect the one this afternoon to.
And that's someone that goes to peer, right?
Yes, normally they're in peer, but because the virus thing, uh, they're over the phone.
Are you recording that one, Boris? The one in here?
I don't know that, uh, we have the ability to record it in our conference room up there. Uh, the one this afternoon, we have a lot of people that like to listen in, uh, but I, I don't know how we can make that happen.
Phone record?
Oh, what? Yeah. That's beyond me, even at that point.
So how many people are engaged in that, in that meeting, you got the judge and peer, right?
Yes.
And then yourself.
Okay, so the county has to be represented by an attorney, so we've got, uh, the attorney and, uh. The witness for the county, which is me or one of my appraisers, uh, so two from the county, the judge and the property owner. Uh, there will be one or two of them where the property owner has an attorney. And sometimes, uh, there's, the property owner brings another witness, uh, but normally it's one or two on the property side. Uh, one, uh, two on the county side and the judge. Um, then it's a public meeting, actually, anybody can sit in, nobody ever does. But, uh, sometimes, uh, many times we'll bring in inexperienced appraisers in our office to sit in on these hearings, it's just a spectator. We'll have to introduce them and all that, but they, they don't participate, but it gives them the experience to see how a hearing goes. Before they have to do it themselves.
Now, keep me posted on the ones that are coming down the pipeline, because if I can squeeze in, I wouldn't mind just. Being a mouse in the corner for a few minutes.
I'll, uh, I'll go up right now and, uh, put together a schedule and email it to you.
Thank you.
We chalked that up, Don, the job training.
What's that?
We chalked that up, Don, the job training.
Um, is it possible that, that we could start doing these hearings forever this way? I hope not, because it's cumbersome to, uh, it, they're, they're like court, okay? Uh, but it, it, it never works like court, everybody wants to interrupt and speak up. And you get chastised by the hearing examiner who acts as a judge, uh, and when all of that is over the phone. And, uh, and when a witness says referring to page thirty three. And you put your finger on that page, nobody's in the room to see what you're pointing at, so it, it makes it cumbersome, when you're all sitting at one table. And, and you say, well, on this page right here, everybody can see what you're looking at. Well, I, I'm not looking forward to the phone hearing, it, it saves me a trip to peer, I'm happy, I don't have to go to peer.
Right, saves money.
It, it saves money, yeah, absolutely, and, oh, okay, so I'm not gonna say that, uh, it won't stay this way. You gotta wonder how much of what we're going through is gonna stick.
Right.
I think the Zoom would be more effective than just the telephone, where you could actually have some video.
Yeah, yep, that, that's right, and, okay, so we're doing a phone hearing, it is not video, it is just phone.
Right.
Video probably be better.
Yeah, those are hard.
Cause drops a lot.
Thanks, Shannon.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Have a great day.
Next we have Eric Witcher. Mister State's Attorney, Public Defender, sorry. Public Defender.
Good morning.
Morning, Mr. Witcher.
Eric Witcher, Public Defender, and, you know, this year, I guess is, um. We, um, had the direction from the commission to keep. To have no increases in all of our non-salaries, so that all remains the same for the twenty twenty adopted. Twenty twenty one proposed as far as salaries, we, um. I think did our best here to, to consider having that, that reflection should be. If everyone in our office were to have received a two percent, or two-step increase in twenty twenty. The change, um, and then putting them on the new pay, uh, band. That, that percentage increase should be a hundred and three thousand dollars over last year. Let's see, the group insurance, um, we. Uh, looking at what we had last year or in, or in, or currently, who's on insurance, that's, that's where we got that figure. Um, that, that's why that was an increase, it's like we have more people than we have used to have had. Outside of that, I, I hope. As far as FTEs are concerned, we have thirty four full-time benefited FTEs, I don't know if you guys have that correction. But that we have thirty four, we've had, we have thirty four now, thirty, should have thirty four full-time benefit in twenty twenty one. And then the seasonal are our summer interns that we try to bring in each summer. So.
So my sheet shows thirty eight.
Thirty eight should be our total, including the seasonal as well as the.
Okay, so that's four seasonal?
Four seasonal, thirty four full-time.
Well, this shows in twenty twenty one, thirty two benefited four seasonal, basically.
Yeah, that's, that's not accurate, it's thirty four, thirty four is what we have now. Um, twenty nineteen was actually thirty three. You granted us increasing one FTE for twenty twenty, that was our, a caseworker.
So you have the thirty four and it's the same amount.
Yep.
Of the three million twenty nine, including the two million eight forty three nine oh nine, it's not gonna increase with. Two other people besides. Like I said, you, you said thirty two down there, but you included a total of thirty four on the top of your budget at two million eight forty three nine oh nine. Was workman's comp and everything?
Yep.
Okay, sir.
Yep.
Any questions?
I, I might ask Eric, how does the Gallagher, how's that gonna work for your office?
You know, I haven't, boys, it's a good question, Mark and I were just talking about in the hall, we, um, it's. We, I haven't had a chance really sit down and play with it yet as far as what that's gonna look like for our attorneys and. Um, looking at budget-wise, you know, some of our employees, they've been here for some time. And their, their, their increase is gonna be very minimal and some are gonna have a larger one. Um, you know, so. I guess I haven't looked at all that equity questions, is this something that's really fair? We are looking at starting attorneys at, um, substantially, you know, it's three or four thousand dollars lower. Than our current starting salary, so we do have some worries about that, you know. It, I don't know what our market's gonna look like here coming up in the next few months. Um, you know, we've had a real challenge recruiting and retaining attorneys. So we're, we, we're worried about that, you know, economically, where we're gonna be at in six months. That's a whole nother question, so we might be in a good position, we could be in a terrible position, I, I think that's. A big unknown.
Well, we're gonna be going into that transition, so.
Yeah.
Just trying to get my feet on the ground, so when, when it hits that, uh.
Right.
We're prepared.
Right, so.
Notice you got a lot of different positions here, so. It's my understanding, there's gotta be a job description for each one of those, so that you know where to place them in the Gallagher.
Yep, that's right.
And that's probably gonna get dialed in sooner or later, maybe, maybe they, they, they need to be in a higher. Category or something that, that the, uh, wa, wage or the right wage, uh, structure.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and that's, again, I, I haven't really played with it enough to, to, it's just been busy last few months here.
Uh, Deb's just the phone call away.
Yeah.
Eric?
Yeah.
What is Westlaw?
It's an, on, it's a, it's a research tool that, um, law firms typically use or attorneys use. To research case law and statutes, but so, in other words, if, if we have a particular stop that. That, you know, we, you sort of type in some keywords for that fact pattern. And that helps bring you up relevant cases, so to help you. Figure out what the, what the law, where the law would come down on that kind of fact pattern, so.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Eric.
All right.
Thank you.
This must be the State's Attorney. Mister Vargo. We decreased, I see we decreased you two million five hundred and thirty seven dollars.
There you go.
Might as well get your goal right away, cause that makes you happy in the morning and wakes you up.
So I do need to give you all. The. First two that I want to talk about.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure that I was doing what the commission asked in terms of. The base budget and there being no increases. And so we submitted one that really was just the. The first one I'm handing each of you. Is just the base budget, it has no increases other than the switch to budget.
Okay.
All other numbers are essentially the twenty twenty budget, we put twenty twenty one at the top. Then, the second one that I am giving you. Is the base plus. A number of things that I think really do need to be included in next year's budget, uh, and I'll explain them kind of individually. Some of them are from the deferred. Items, if you'll recall, when the commission asked us for ten percent, we, uh. Had that meeting and we talked about the. Uh, various possibilities. And I mentioned to you that there were some things that I was gonna defer, so I color-coded things and I talked about deferring some costs from this year to next year.
Okay, Mark, just one question, okay, so what we have in our book?
What you have in your book, I think should be replaced by these two.
Okay.
So I would ask you to do that, I apologize for that. Uh, but I actually, when I was going over this yesterday, I caught a, uh. Formula error where we were using the twenty twenty one budget to figure out the percentage increase. When obviously you use the original, the twenty twenty budget, and then the number to figure out the increase. So we changed a couple of those around and then I made sure that I was on that base, I made sure that I was truly submitting. Just what we had in twenty twenty, uh, per the commission's request.
Okay, thank you.
So the first page, the change on twenty twenty one is four million five nineteen, your top number. Of your old one is four million five twenty five.
Sorry, you're gonna have to give me that.
Do, do you have your old one with you, Mark?
I did not bring my old one, I did not bring the twenty twenty with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
Oh, the one that we, yes, the one that we sent. And where are you looking at, which number are you quoting there, the four million?
I'm sorry, the, um, under total, total personal services. So you have.
Four, five, twenty five.
Yep, and now you have.
Four, five, nineteen.
Okay.
So it's actually a little bit lower.
Okay, so that's lower, and then the bottom number is. Lower as well.
Correct, because again of that.
And you believe at this time, then you should be, at your personnel number should be at. Four million five fourteen, and then explain why that is, and then your bottom number should be five million. Eight sixty three, five oh two, and why the change on both of those, if you would.
You bet. So the personnel services, that's obviously just dealing with Gallagher, we took everybody, we matched them up, we said, okay, if you're making this. You're gonna go to the first step where you don't take a pay cut, and that's what we come out with.
That'd be the first page or the second?
That's the first page, well, that's, they're, they should be the same on that. Four, five.
Fourteen, six hundred. There's a five thousand dollar difference somewhere.
Yeah, cause you have.
Gimme a second.
Your new page is, I mean, your first page is four million five nineteen, you're, on your second page, it's. Fu- four million five fourteen six, which is not.
Yeah, that was.
Five hundred thousand dollar difference.
So that, that's gonna be essentially a rounding error with when we altered the second page. We were using some slightly different numbers in terms of individual people that we expect to have hired. Susan, rather than just do an average, we're not that big a department, I mean, fifty eight people's a lot, but it's. Not enough to really average out, she literally goes through and she decides who's actually on group insurance and which version of insurance do they take? She literally goes through and she decides who's actually on group insurance and which version of insurance do they take? Single, double or family. There were two slightly different because they were done slightly different times. And so that five thousand. I can ask you, basically just accept it as a rounding error. I think the five fourteen is the more accurate one because it was the second one done. But don't hold me to that.
The four fourteen?
The four, the four, five, fourteen, six hundred, I believe, is the accurate number with our most recent best estimate of. Our various costs for group insurance, work comp, retirement, OASI.
Okay, and your service fees are up nineteen on your second page and the sixty seven thousand up on supplies. Are you looking to buy something else or that that's where your increase is?
That's what I wanted to talk to you about. So that's where there are several different things that go into this budget. One is the deferred cost. So what we told you in part to save that 10% that we were looking for for cash flow purposes. Was to say that we would not replace computers this year. We replace twice as many computers next year. And unfortunately, just because of how things fall. IT is the one that tells us what computers we need to replace. They like them to be within a certain age range for their ease of use. And what we budgeted for in 2020 was thirty two thousand dollars and change. What we were due, even without having deferred that thirty two thousand, was fifty seven thousand next year. Just because of the age of, you know, what hit when in the cycle. So our cycle was a slightly larger one for next year anyway. Plus, we have the thirty two thousand that we didn't. We we are not budgeting for replacing any of those computers this year. That's going to go into next year's budget. And so that's a fifty seven thousand dollar increase there. Same thing with our furniture, that there's no additional cost to that for next year's budget. But the deferred cost from this year with fifty eight people, if you replace two office suites a year, you're still on a. Twenty, thirty year cycle, depending on exactly how many of your offices or cubicles you can replace. So we deferred those costs, but I'm asking you to include them as a slight increase into next year's budget.
You're talking cubicles or what are and computers are increasing your budget by sixty seven thousand?
Fifty seven thousand on the computers and ten thousand on the deferred cost of furniture.
Okay, and then aren't you guys working at home? I mean, is that, isn't that less wear and tear? Is that, I mean, or is it was already trashed before you started? I guess I'm not getting what.
Well, that may change our cost going forward, but we're. We budget a fairly limited amount, I think, for replacing furniture. Like I said, when you have fifty eight people of whom twenty some are attorneys. We're not buying the kind of furniture that necessarily lasts for thirty years, so. That just, we we have to replace those office suites and. We we do so intermittently. We basically look around, we go, okay, who has the worst desk? And we replace the desk.
Okay, so how how long we've been open?
Well, we brought most of our stuff from the old building.
Okay, that's why I was like, Mark, you guys replaced, I mean, you replaced a new furniture in less than what?
Cubicles were new, obviously, but the the furniture was.
Okay.
Almost all, other than growth, was almost all stuff that we brought.
Okay, that's why I'm like, Mark, you just, you just redid this building and now you want some new furniture.
We read really hard. So if you're reading really intently at a desk, you can destroy that desk in a week or two.
I'm thinking you could because you're kind of bitter.
Is there, is there any salvage value to that? Like, probably not much, but what what do you do with all the used computers and furniture? Just stick to the.
Give it back to IT and to buildings and grounds and they do their auction or surplus or however they do it. But we don't have a direct role in that.
So I'm going to ask.
My guess is they get virtually nothing from it.
I'm going to ask you the obvious, Mark. This probably should have went to Cindy so she understood some of that budget before us, but maybe not. She's looking at me. Because I thought because of percentage or people changes, they don't go to you. They come to us after the fact of they already submitted their budget and then give us a different one the same day.
The budget that they submitted first and which came to me was the budget as you guys had directed them to do.
Okay.
Only increase salaries.
Okay.
So if you want me to rework my numbers with his revised numbers, we can move forward at some point with that. But he he did it correct. He submitted it as he was directed.
Okay. So if people want changes, then we just say, okay, that's greater, that's not happening.
And then the last change in that budget is that nineteen thousand. And that is based on the fact that since 2005, we have not changed the pay that we give to our. Blood techs who draw blood for us on drug and alcohol cases, so DUIs and internal possession of drugs. And they have asked us for a ten dollar increase. And that seems quite reasonable. We're negotiating that with them, but I also wanted you guys to be aware of it so that it would be part of this budget. So I did not include that in the base budget. I included in the base plus. Because I felt that that was, again, what the the commission was looking for.
To us, ten dollars per test?
Per test. We pay them forty and forty five. Thirty five and forty. So the blood techs themselves get thirty five. The person who runs the blood tech program for us and make sure that there's somebody assigned to it. And there's going to be there's somebody there on every given night, covers by himself if he has to. That person gets five more per test instead of getting like a salary for running the program.
So did they do a Gallagher study? Do you do that or is that just something that's out of the realm of?
This is a contract.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
These are contract employees.
Just just a question in case we come back later and say, you know, we have a certain amount that we pay somebody.
Mark, these contracts, how long are they for?
I essentially, we, it's a year and renewing. So they've renewed with us every year. I think ultimately, if I recall correctly, we did give the head of the program that five dollar difference. The first year or two that I was in office, so about six, seven years ago now. But other than that, we haven't changed it. And they sent us some information. We're way behind pretty much everybody in the region. Now, we have more numbers of with volume purchasing, maybe you get a little bit extra. But they're getting sixty bucks in Lawrence County or I don't hold me to the exact numbers, but they're getting a lot more. Not they, but their equivalents are getting a lot more in our neighboring counties. So. We we don't feel like we have to set the the bar here. Because honestly, I think what most of them do is they come to the parking lot and they sleep. And they come inside three, four times a night sometimes because we have a much busier jail than most places. Whereas I think the folks staying in Lawrence County, they probably are at home and they get woken up at two in the morning. They drive in, they drive home. That's appropriate to give them a little more money, probably. But I do think that we're a little bit out of whack. And so that's where that nineteen thousand dollars comes from.
And Mark, I like how you did the narrative on the grants and the different areas. That's helpful to us so we know what's coming through and.
That would be Susan.
Thank you, Ms. Susan. Very.
Where that really came from.
Thank you, Ms. Susan.
So Mark, on these, doing these tests, these, are are these people not typically basically part time? They probably have jobs, other jobs.
They're phlebotomists for the hospital or for a, one of them, the one who's retiring worked for. One of those dock in the box kind of places where you can come in and get tested for your insurance purposes or whatever, so.
Sure.
You know, they're medical professionals of some kind.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Mark?
Well, but before we get there, so I'm not done yet. So these are the things that we're asking.
Oh, you're not, you're you're adding more to my, our budget, my budget, our budget?
I thought that was with the southern.
Oh, you're just going to keep handing those papers till we figure out a number for you?
What's that?
This is the third version?
This is the third version.
Did you get seventy in any of these versions yet?
I did not, because until you approve or give some idea whether you're going to approve, there's not a whole lot of purpose in making her do an extra three, four different versions.
But she could kind of look at your versions to see if they're crazy.
So what this does is there are some things that we believe. Need to become part of the budget. So as you're aware, we're through MacArthur. We started a drug diversion program. And MacArthur is funding that entirely for 2020. That should move into the county's budget, I believe. We are still working on that program getting fully running. COVID has been a little bit of an impediment. But the bottom line is, I don't think anybody here is surprised by the fact that we have a call for. Having people approach criminal justice differently. And one of the big things that we've done between the care campus and the diversion programs is we have been treating them differently. But that requires that we actually have that programming, that we know that it's going to be ongoing. Our MacArthur budget is only for another year and a half or so, two years. Probably two years from now, but the bottom line is, I believe that that is a program that is proving itself. That's the person that is helping make sure that we get appropriate people into the care campus, that the right people who have the best chance of success there are the ones that are going in. And it's the person who does the liaison work within the community to make use of things like native healing. And the programs like Seven Directions.
So Barry doesn't do all that stuff and he can't do some of this that your your department is doing?
Barry really, Barry can certainly decide who's appropriate to come in. We're basically a pre-screening tool for Barry within the criminal justice community. We are up probably eight to 10% of you Judge Feifli is going to tell you. We're running about eight to 10% increases for the last three, four years in a row. And anybody who understands compound interest should be a little bit scared by that for methamphetamine cases. And so putting those, figuring out where those people go and who is the best chance of success there. Barry's dealing with all of the people who are walk-ins. There might be people who have no criminal justice involvement. Care Campus serves everyone. We're the ones that are kind of the gatekeeper when it comes to the criminal justice side. And so that diversion is a huge part of that and I think a very important part of that going forward if we're going to keep our jail numbers down. COVID has helped us keep the jail numbers down. We've kind of been really harsh about letting a lot of people out that maybe we wouldn't have let out. But if we want to keep those numbers down, you're going to have to be successful. You can't just say we're going to let people out because then they're just coming back tomorrow. What you need to do is we're going to let them out and we're going to have something for them to do and that's what diversion is all about. So this is a long term investment and I understand that.
Well, it's.
But it's also one that I think that. The county is ripe to make and I think that it pays off for the county in the long run. I think we can certainly look at our diversion programming generally and say that it has saved the county money. And saved the county from having an inordinate number of people in jail and even the possibility then, or you're talking about whether you build another wing or you build another. And we don't want to get there. We'd rather be looking at times when we can close a wing down. And I know the sheriff is. That that's part of. His budget, I'll let him talk about that. The second thing that's in that budget is specifically funding for Seven Directions. As a diversion program. Seven Directions is a contractor, they can't work for free. We do have some great partners out there. Native Healing has this, is taking or will take people without cost because they're funded by the federal government. Seven Directions, though, is kind of a mid range program for us. It's where we place people on more of an outpatient basis. It has then the effect of both getting them out of the system, but into a culturally appropriate attempt to remove them from criminal activity. We had been, we have been working with them. We found money for that in our budget last year and then even this year. That's been interrupted by COVID, but I want to make sure that we are capable of restarting it when with the new calendar year.
For me, when we create new programs and not that they're not good programs, we have many programs that we have already, I think, in our community. That we could like either turn them over or work with them instead of start it in a state's attorney's office or different areas. Which I don't think is our, is our realm. Our realm is to work with our community, I believe, as a state's attorney and have programs in that that work for our community, not create them through a state's attorney's office. And pay through them through the county without.
Well, I think we are working with our community here, Commissioner, but I think what we're doing is we're recognizing that they can't work for free.
Right, well.
Because these are contractors that we're utilizing. The numbers at Care Campus will tell you, we have way more people ready and in need of treatment than we can treat even at the Care Campus.
I'm just saying, what happens is you have WATI, you have different areas in Rapid City and it seems like we're creating another area. What I see is, and I keep seeing this, is there's got to be some programs that work for. Instead of creating another program, another program and another program, didn't say they all didn't work in in their areas. At first, that's what I thought collective impact was doing when it first came in here is to take the nonprofits in the areas. And combine them into areas that actually would be efficient and effective. And it seems like when, not that. On these programs, in a sense, don't have areas that are working, but. I I'm just not into creating more and more programs in in different areas when we need to combine them with other community. Nonprofits or something, so you have three or four programs in one area instead of we've got one, they've got one. She's got one and they got two over here.
I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think you're quite accurate in terms of what's available to us out there.
Okay.
This is an existing program. It's one that worked on Pine Ridge for a long time. It was funded by the tribe down there inside their jail. They're coming up here, they want to be part of a solution for the native population in Rapid City. We want to give culturally appropriate programming and make, expand the number that's available. So we're not trying to recreate a program, but we are trying to figure out a way to finance that program. And if there is a free program that we could send these people to, trust me, we'd be on it.
Okay.
So anyway, that's, that's where that number comes from.
Okay.
Mark, that number, is that the one oh four?
That is sixty thousand of the one oh four.
Okay, so nineteen would be for the blood.
Nineteen was from the blood.
And then I get eighty five difference between one oh four and nineteen.
Then there was ten that relates to, I've mentioned the Joe Garcia's program. That's a youth, basically weightlifting program. It's, I use it more as an example, but it's one that we had agreed with him to do. On a kind of trial basis. And then with COVID, you can't really weight lift in groups. So he's the the gentleman whose brother died. He was very. Prominent in the newspapers and the news for a while there in December. His brother died in a house fire related to methamphetamine use. And Joe's been a very active member of the community in terms of trying to get people off of drugs. Weightlifting is the mechanism that he uses, but it's a treatment program or not treatment, it's not medically based. But it is a support program as well as then an activity program.
So we're talking the ten thousand.
That was ten and then the last.
Can we have these, can you like break all these down for us, Mark, on these, so we can decide kind of.
A little narrative on each one and what the benefit would be?
You bet. So I've got some of that. I don't have the last two lines. Oh, I know what the, there was twenty five there, Commissioner Rosskine. Ten was the Joe Garcia program. The last fifteen that is proposed. But this is not complete, you know, it doesn't include those two programs, the. Seven Directions and the weightlifting program.
But I'm just talking a little narrative on what they are and where they've been successful and why we should consider it.
And you have page one that you could break down, page two that you can break down and page three. Basically, what your changes are, Mark, and where that money's going for those changes for page one, two and three.
You bet. Well, page one, obviously, is the base and then.
Yes, sir.
Sure, we'll give you a list of the things that are different between the three pages.
Because because listening to you, it's it's not a bad thing, but that's a lot of information to remember and then break down by yourself.
I I tend to agree with Deb. I. Mark, one of the toughest things that I have to do in the community is is trying to explain what's happening and what's going on in our community. I know there's a lot of programs happening and you guys are doing some fantastic work. But I think if you could break that down, I think I asked for this a couple of years ago. I'd seen it a couple of years ago. But it it's nice for us that when I get these phone calls and people saying that there's nothing going on or we need to start doing this. We got things that are going on. I I definitely understand what you're doing is working. I've seen it and I've seen some of the numbers and I guess. Breaking it down for the commission would, has dual benefits for everybody, not only for us, but for.
We'll get you that before you guys finish up your your meetings this week, so. I guess with that, I'll stand for questions. Oh, I will say this. I do know that the MacArthur Foundation understands kind of where we've been at. And I do think there's at least a possibility that we could work with them about partially funding that. That drug diversion position. that drug diversion position. But I do think that they're also going to want to see at least some buy-in from the county, that the county is also invested in it. So I'm certainly willing to talk to them about what that number might mean. I think it should be moved into the county budget entirely because I think that normalizes it. I think it's proved that it's worthwhile, and I think that we should be paying for it. But if we can get it elsewhere, I'm certainly willing to talk to them about that. But I just want to mention that to you guys so you know what the the true background is.
Bottom line, Mark, is the changes you want to make, where that money is going through the changes. Like you said, number one's not going to have any changes. Number two, you said it was for equipment and computers, that kind of thing. And and then number three, you have programs, different things, what each program's going to cost and where that extra money's going that way.
You bet.
When we vote on different things, we have it broke down because we might like some of number two and some of number three.
Understood.
Okay, sir.
Seven Directions would be relative to the medicine wheel? The seven directions of the medicine wheel? Is that what?
That's the reference, yes.
Okay, so east, south, north, up, south?
Up, down, and then internal is the seventh direction. And that's what they're referring to is that you have to get right with your seven directions.
Makes a lot more sense once you know more about it.
Yeah. It's a it's been a pretty impressive program down there on Pine Ridge. Pine Ridge, interestingly, honestly puts people in jail much longer for simple possessions than we do. On a simple possession of marijuana or methamphetamine, you can do six months or a year in the Pine Ridge Adult Defender Facility. So they've had an opportunity to have a really captive audience, and they've worked with that captive audience, and they've had some real successes down there. So it's it's a program that we have great faith in. And again, we had kind of figured out a way to cut some other things and make that part of the budget. But it's been derailed by COVID because it's really based on being in a room. It's like an AA meeting almost. It's really tough for them to do it by Zoom. They're trying to put something like that together right now. We're waiting to see exactly how well they.
By implementing that program, in the long run, we might save money elsewhere.
You know, the whole point of the criminal justice system has to be not to see people come back. And if we can figure out better ways to do that, that reduces the burden on the police department, on the sheriff's office, on the jail, on my office, Eric's office, court-appointed counsel, which you're going to hear about here in a minute. All of those things are huge costs. And we don't get to see, like, I can't tell you if we put 100 people through seven directions. I can't tell you exactly how many in this model are going to come back after a few years we'd be able to. But we can't tell you with exact certainty. So we can't tell you how many, how much are we saving? But we know that we're getting a better outcome for the community. I look at our diversion programming. Marty Kraus comes down to me about every two weeks or so, and he tells me about the people he's expunging their records of and what jobs they're doing now instead of being in the criminal justice system. Those people are now paying taxes, doing jobs. It is a huge benefit to the county, but obviously it costs the county because we're paying Marty. So I mean, I think it's all worth it in the end, and I think it proves itself to be worth it in the end. But doing a one-to-one budget comparison is always going to be tough.
How long have they had the program down on Pine Ridge?
I think they did it seven to 10 years. I mean, they've been doing it for a long time. Problem is, they don't really track. The data on Pine from the Pine Ridge Adult Defender Facility is not necessarily reliable. I don't know anybody tracked it.
We did it through MacArthur Grant, right?
Yeah, we've definitely been tracking our diversion outcomes through MacArthur.
So are we creating FDEs and programs through our grants? Is that is that where we're getting some of these different things that we're wanting to move forward with and and have?
Yeah, MacArthur is essentially giving us an opportunity to try it out, see what it looks like, see whether it's working, and then decide whether to pay for it in the long run. That's, I think, one of the great things about grant funding. You can't expect them to simply come in and say, we'll pay for this in perpetuity. But if the commission can then say, we're not just taking a chance on something, we're taking something that's already proved that it's working, and we're now going to fund it going forward, that's the point of the of, to me, that's the point of grant funding. Some of it, you hope, is really ongoing, like Voca and VowA. But realistically, I think most of most of the grant funding that we are chasing in Pennington County is mostly going to be about getting help, getting something started, and then making sure that it works before we actually ask the taxpayers to fund it.
Should it go under your budget or should it go like under the other requests when we have programs like this? Because we have a lot of programs that are asking us, and they're worthwhile programs that want funding as well. So are we are we putting these other requests for programs under people's state's attorneys or Health and Human Services or sheriffs? Or are we putting them under other requests?
I, this is kind of, I, we tried to schedule Liz to come in and give a presentation on MacArthur, but I can't remember what happened. But personally, I think the commission probably needs a good informational section, whether it's 20 minutes at a meeting of all these diversion programs and what some of the things they're doing that are working. There are some hard numbers that, and we could, I think they can present those numbers, so.
So we want to put it under a a department head or are we putting it under other requests?
Now, I think. Since we send them people, it seems appropriate that we contract with them. So these are not people that we just want this. So like Wavy, we hope that they exist in the community. That's, you know, they do good work, they help the county out. They take the pressure sometimes off of victim advocates for us or for the sheriff's office. But we do not send people to Wavy. We don't say, Wavy, here's a person, do these things for them. With these programs, we do. When we put them through a diversion program, the Seven Directions program is 14 weeks, and we send them somebody, we send them 12 to 14 people at a time for a class. And so since we're we're the driving force on the numbers, it seems appropriate to budget it that way rather than just say, we will budget you to exist, and then we'll try to send you as many people as possible.
Any other questions?
Well, I just want to remark on his comments about trying to get this to the point where people are not re-offending. And if we can get those numbers high enough that we are seeing that drastic reduction in jail time, prosecution time, defense time. Those are the real numbers that we can show the public and say, look, this may be costing us $400,000 a year to run out of taxpayer money, but over here at the jail, we're saving $667,000 a year.
And I'd like to know.
So we've we've got a gain of $227,000.
And I'm not against saying, if you have programs in the community, are you comparing them to those? Are we just creating ones that you add this saves seven and this saved 14 and this, you know, I mean? What are you comparing your programs to? Do we have other programs that are already doing something like this and we're just adding another subsection of that program for diversion? I mean, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I see what you're saying.
How are you doing your comparables to the, you know, you're helping? I'm not saying you're not helping people, Mark, and I'm not against your program. I'm saying, when I see programs, I just see more and more programs. We have 10 programs that five are, yeah, they save five, but the other have saved 500, and it's amazing. So are we are we creating programs that we're going to keep forever and we're going to maintain forever? I mean, when you're creating a program, Mark, it's going to be in your budget every year?
Things like this will likely be in the budget every year. So what, again, to kind of talk diversion generally as opposed to drug diversions, since drug diversion is newer. What we've done on adult diversion, young adult diversion in particular, young adult diversion very much goes out and beats the bushes and looks for community programs to put kids in that don't cost us anything. Now, there are some programs that they have to send money because we do not charge anyone ever to go through diversion. That makes it a rich kid get out of jail free card. We're not going to do that. So what Marty has done an amazing job of, Kim on the juvenile diversion side, they've done amazing jobs of reaching out to the community and looking for exactly the kind of programs that you're talking about. But the reason that we're talking about Seven Directions and expanding some of our other drug programming is that those programs don't exist in the community. We don't have the capacity. There's no place that'll take these people for free and have the kind of impact that's necessary. When you're talking methamphetamine, this is not a an easy fix. Everybody at the Care Campus will tell you that. Everybody in the jail will tell you that. So the bottom line is, I, it's hard to prove a negative, but I guarantee you that we have been looking for things like this. We didn't find them, so we went out and we reached out to people who were doing something like this somewhere else, and we're hoping that they'll come up here and help do it for us. The hope is that between the money that we've brought in under the juvenile diversion incentive program, which, you know, we've overcollected the last two, three years in a row, set the tone for the entire state in terms of that reimbursement fund. There's talk, there was talk this year at the legislature, it didn't go anywhere, but hopefully the adult diversion programs, maybe they'll catch some fire as far as getting some state funding on that as well. So that if we have that, both of those streams, that would offset something with the county. The bottom line is, you can't, I don't think that we can wait for it to happen. And we certainly can't say, well, we'll we'll cut, shut down the wing at the jail and then in five years, we'll save enough money to have this kind of programming.
Right.
That's not going to work.
We also have One Heart coming in that's going to be doing a lot of the native healing and some other stuff as well. So what I'm saying, are we we adding to something or are we are we not? So I know they're going to be doing a lot of, talk to Bev, of the native healing and the five directions and stuff like that, so not.
And when One Heart gets on board, that'll be another resource, so that'll be awesome.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So how many programs do we need in order to fund through the county is a good way to put it.
Madam Chair, I think we've asked Mark to put that in the document so that we can all look at the same document. And Mark's going to be a salesperson, he's going to either sell us or you're not.
I understand that.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for a good reason.
If you don't ask, you don't get, and I think this is important enough to bring it up to you. But I wanted to make sure I obeyed the rules and don't get chewed out. So I wanted to make sure that we gave you the base budget and then explain what the differences were. The middle budget, I do think, is very important. There's some things that just, for instance, I came to you, you guys, I told you I'd be deferring cost to next year, and you all nodded. I'd like that money to be in next year's budget then, so that's part of it. And then the last part, obviously, is obviously up to you guys, is your discretion. But I listed them for a reason.
If we did the seven directions, it wouldn't, it'd probably take two or three years before you see any residual impact. So I can understand why you don't want to just do it one year. You need to do this, see if it works.
That's exactly right. And you need to be able to say, you see impact immediately. Like I said, Marty comes down, he tells me about all these folks that were expunging their records and what they're doing and where they're working and, you know, the gal that went through a CNA course as part of her diversion program, who's now going back to nursing school to become an RN. So I mean, you see those kinds of things. We'll see some impacts, but as far as being able to quantify them and put data numbers on them at 6% or 8%, that's going, that's a tough one. And we'll be doing that. We do track them, but that takes years.
Anybody else have any other questions?
I think we'll understand this morning when we get Judge Feifli. I'm looking at some of the increases in meth, and I don't see that going down any. I'm afraid not.
I just got one final comment. You know, being part of the Macarthur Foundation work and so forth, these diversion programs, I think you nailed it is when you said the MacArthur Grants help fund a program that's get them started to see if they're going to work. I mean, if they're not going to work, then we we're not going to do them. And that's the whole idea, trying something new. If it's already in our community, we're not, they're not going to fund us. Yeah, prime example. But I think our diversion programs are doing pretty good. And a lot of, like, these adult ones, we're not going to see them, the results for years to come because where where the big result is, is if if they get deferred as a young adult, they don't have that on their record, which means they can get the jobs that they need to continue on. Whereas if they have something on their record, it prevents them from moving up later in life. So I I think there's some really good programs, and I think we get we get some more information. We'll all understand a little bit more.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Any other questions?
No, sir. Thank you for that narrative.
Thank you, Mark.
If we could take five, guys. Okay, sir. You're up.
All right. Good morning, everyone. This is the time set, and I appreciate, again, the opportunity to partner with the county to give you some input on what we believe you will be spending for at least that portion of your budget that the Seventh Circuit tries to assist you in managing. Just a reminder, these are numbers that you are required to pay based upon South Dakota statute and federal authority. So what we have done over the years, and I think we do this as well as any circuit in the state, is to partner with your office as well as other county officers to make an effort to try to make this part of your annual budget as economical as we possibly can. Our judges regularly challenge and review lawyers on the bills that they submit. Our judges always critically review any requests for expert witnesses and the like. So I think we do as much as we possibly can to partner with you to keep these costs at a place that both fulfills sort of what we need to do to ensure constitutional rights are being complied with as well as to make sure that we have an effort to keep your budget at a level that is reasonably manageable. We promised several years ago that we would take some critical inquiry into how attorneys are appointed on cases in an effort to sort of make sure that we're appointing only on those cases in which we believe a person would actually qualify under state and federal law. I think, as I mentioned last year, that resulted, you know, me opening my mouth resulted in me being asked by the Chief Justice to chair a committee across the state to look at evaluation of appointment of attorneys for those folks that are unable to afford one. That has resulted in a new application process that was approved by the Supreme Court, and then subsequently this past spring by, there's a presiding judges council. The presiding judges from each of the Seventh Circuit's meet, and we do essentially the policy work for the court system in conjunction with the Chief Justice. We met and approved that. So we're hopeful that there's some, again, additional critical inquiry being looked at as we move into the number of folks that we are being asked to appoint counsel for. Our budget request is flat. I think that is consistent with the request. I outlined sort of some of the reasons for that in the letter in that. I gave what I think is sort of, don't be surprised by a potential supplemental request. Our expectation is roughly about $30,000 in a couple of different budgets moving forward. And I outlined, I think, the reasons for that, and I think you heard that probably from Mr. Vargo, at least in the little pieces of discussion that I heard, is that methamphetamine continues to be a scourge in our community. We continue to see increased case filings just on that alone. I will tell you that methamphetamine alone impacts everything that we do. So specifically, for example, if we're asking for a flat or a slight increase in our court-appointed attorney budget, that's related to those case number filings and that increase. That also results in increases in our abuse and neglect docket and some of the other things that we see because those are the same folks that are getting criminal charges. They're being looked at in terms of their parenting skills and what we need to do in terms of protection through the Department of Social Services and ultimately the court system on that. So everything we do sort of touches that particular piece of what's going on in our community. And and all the numbers, regardless of what source you take them from, the information that I'm giving you are the case filings that we see. I know that you get information in terms of arrests from the sheriff's office and the like. Every one of those numbers are consistent. There might be a little difference in terms of the percentage increases they're talking about because we count different things purposefully from our own records. But clearly, the message that you're getting in each one of those cases is that methamphetamine continues to be a problem. Methamphetamine contacts within the justice system continues to increase. And as a result, I don't see any immediate downturn in what our budgets are going to look like for you moving forward with court services and what you're being asked to fund. With that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Judge, when you when you say meth, to date, 20, 2046 cases with seven months.
Yeah.
You know, that's, that gets a person's attention. When you say meth, is it, then are there additional cases relative to cocaine and other drugs? Or when you say meth, it just means?
When we say meth, Commissioner, we mean methamphetamine. When we say meth, Commissioner, we mean methamphetamine.
So then there's other?
That there are other things that we see, I will also tell you that I think that our increased case numbers, as I indicated, not, and I should be clear on this. It's not only on the family docket, but for example, on crimes of violence, on property crimes, a lot of those are driven by folks that have the underlying meth issue.
True.
And are needing to find ways to pay for that drug or are in a position where they're responding inappropriately to some circumstance in the community through violence or otherwise, that's just what we're seeing. I mean, I, I think we're all aware of that and I just think that MacArthur and some of the other things that you're talking about with uh, Mr. Vargo suggests that we're trying to find some other answers that help us to not be in the middle of this thing. It is a huge wheel to turn and it's the kind of thing that's gonna take us several years to sort of see effective outcomes. And the court system on the MacArthur end are doing a lot of different things that we hope is a good partnership with the other Pennington County players. We're trying to do some more critical and early bond assessments that gets people out of jail earlier, that reduces your per jail time and costs as a result. We're doing some court notification kinds of things that allow us to have more regular contact with people. And some of the employee issues that you were talking about in terms of folks that are funded by MacArthur are those folks that were being asked to do that. And so we're, we're, we're making sure that we have some folks that we can regularly communicate with, try to get in touch with and bring them into court. So we're not issuing warrants, for example, for their appearance. That's all helpful in reducing uh, number of jail days and those costs. So we're partnering, I think, pretty well with the sheriff's office, with the state's attorney's office, with the public defender's office to try some systemic things that allow us to make some changes that hopefully long-term will result in some gains for you in terms of, as you mentioned, Commissioner DeSanto, that we're gonna flop, we're gonna have some savings in Department Budget A, even though we're spending some money in Department Budget B, and that's the plan. But again, it's hard to get there in a short period of time.
Glad to hear that there's a modified application for court-appointed attorneys, cause I had a gentleman approach me last year and actually sent me, uh, he did the research and this thing, uh, this gentleman, uh, had a court-appointed attorney and he had substantial income and cars and boats and, and uh, his neighbor was concerned about that, but I was, I was told that there's gonna be a modified application, make that process a little more, uh, some teeth in it where you just can't shoot, shoot the system.
Well, there is, and that's what it was designed to do is, the previous methodology relied mostly on income. Uh, now we've asked additional information in terms of availability of other resources, whether it be property, a, a family member, uh, credit cards, for example, that you can use to be paying for the assistance of an attorney as opposed to requiring the county to be your bank. I mean, the law requires that they make repayment to you and the auditor's office works well on those collection efforts, but there really isn't any significant reason that there's a number of folks that they shouldn't be having to take their loan from the county. They ought to be able to take their loan from other places, and that's what it's designed to do. I, I will tell you candidly, and I don't have these numbers directly, Commissioner, but the vast bulk of what we're seeing are folks that have zeros across the board, whether it's property income or otherwise. Unfortunately, the cases that we see that are increasing, these methamphetamine and then sort of the related cases to methamphetamine, that are the ones that are most dramatically increasing, they, it tends to most dramatically impact those that have the inability to pay for anything, including lawyers, and so are we gonna reduce those numbers a little bit on court-appointed attorneys fees? I think so, but the percentage of people that are actually going to be critically looked at by that new form is kind of a drop in the bucket. I mean, I just, just so you know that, but you know what, every drop helps, so that's what we're trying to do.
Judge, I know, I know there's conflicting opinions on reduction of, of uh, some of the um, ingestion, trace amounts, reducing those from felonies to, to misdemeanors, maybe misdemeanors attached to mandatory treatment program. And uh, I don't know if, how far we're carrying that forward or if there's still lots of talk about it, but I think we need to continue to pay attention to states that have done that to see what those results are giving. Um, and to get more consideration in legislation to look at that again and again and again, frankly. Um, till we really know what impact that has. You know, I know that in some of our discussions uh, last year, I mentioned that one benefit to that is that uh, when somebody has a felony attached to their name, even if they do recover from their meth addiction, going out and getting a job and becoming a productive citizen is pretty tough. Um, so if we could get those people that are, that are getting trace amounts or, or um, ingestion reduced to a misdemeanor, then maybe we could avoid some jail time, maybe we could get them back as productive citizens um, without so much of a struggle for them to get there.
Well, I, I, I can tell you, I think that the systemic cost would be reduced if we changed some of the way we look at how cases like you're talking about, Commissioner DeSanto, are charged in the state of South Dakota. There have been some efforts to try to recognize the kinds of uh, social issues in terms of what your record might look like kind of thing. Um, recently, within the last couple of years, there's been a deferred imposition statute that allows folks, if they get treatment and they complete successfully, uh, a one-year probationary term. The underlying guilty plea to the um, felony charge will be reduced to a misdemeanor on their record, and I think that's helpful. And we've had a number of those that have been successfully completed, and I think that that's a start. Uh, I, I will tell you that on behalf of the judicial system, I don't have a direct opinion on the question of whether we should have any legislative changes on um, whether the trace amount question for possession or the ingestion amount should be changed to a misdemeanor. I view that as akin to um, being asked to both throw the pitch and call the balls and strikes. I don't think that my office can do that, I think we're only being able to call the balls and strikes, so we're left with whatever the legislature gives us. But I will tell you, I do know from uh, direct impact on some of these other issues that costs to the judicial system will go down if we have some other ways to sort of manage folks that have a drug-related issue. And likely the societal cost will be lessened because you'll have people that will be able to sort of be more effective in their job search and other things. Because their record will be something other than a drug-related felony.
Thank you.
Yep.
Judge White, I, I'd like to tell you, I appreciate the work that you've done for the MacArthur Foundation, I mean, you're chairing it. And I think through this budget process, you've seen, you know, we got the public defender state attorney, Tom and you, you're all intertwined and MacArthur brought all four of those agencies together to, to come up with ideas. You really, you, that, being able to work with you is, I wish a lot of people could because they'd have a different outlook on what judges do. You know, you do have a compassionate side, yeah. A lot of people don't get to see you.
Well, it, it's, I, I can tell you, one of the things that I recognized the minute I uh, elected to do this particular judge is that in any given hearing, at least half the people are gonna be unhappy with me.
You're not.
So we, we recognize that that's part of the equation, but I appreciate the uh, the comments, Commissioner LaCroix, and, and find that there are, you know, there was a lot of pre-existing cooperation in Pennington County before I took this job. And I think this county has a long history of understanding that the way to move the ball forward in the best possible fashion is for all stakeholders to work together. And that long predated what, what I've been doing, I just was fortunate to be one of the guys that as we stepped up and did some things that were unique, I think, for the justice system players in South Dakota to be able to be part of that longstanding cooperation and that history, so it's, uh, it's been very helpful for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge, and, and you, I think for your job, you'd have to be pretty compassionate, just because you're in the long run have to do the right thing, that, um, that doesn't mean, uh, a person that does as much work as you do, that's obvious that you're compassionate about what you do.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you. I, I will tell you, just, you know, just so I, I don't go out of here too big a head, a lot of it's self-centered as well. It, it, I feel if I do the right thing, I don't have to see these folks again, so. Unless there's any other questions, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Judge, you're welcome.
Mr. Tom, this would be that five-minute presentation you were giving us? (laughing).
But trying to keep it an hour and a half.
Okay.
As you advance it here.
Just the floor.
Yeah, I got, I'll do it here. Are you gonna come up? All right, well, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, uh, thank you for the time to talk about the budget and I'm, I'm gonna go through the slides fairly quickly, so if you have a specific question, um, you can let me know. I, there's three or four slides, I wanna spend a little more time on that, it's about our wellness and workers' comp sort of stuff. And uh, we have a number of the staff here with us, one, they have an interest in the process and two, can help answer questions. So if you have a question, don't have to circle back, we can answer it while they're here. Our overall crime data, we always break it down both ways, um, just sheriff's office specific and then county as a whole, because that impacts, you know, the jail and JSC, and so it's important to look at everybody's numbers. And you can see they're fairly flat, fairly consistent across the board, no real surprises. Uh, coroner calls, the state pretty consistent, we always say we run about three hundred and fifty coroner calls a year if you average them out over the number of years, again, that was put in place in nineteen ninety-eight by the commission when they combined the two offices of uh, sheriff and coroner. And about eighty percent of those are autopsies, so we do one or two autopsies a week, uh, depending upon the weekend availability of the forensic pathologist. Investigations, this is on point with what the judge was talking about, I think Commissioner DeSanto, DeSanto asked a question about methamphetamine. Consistently seventy percent of the drug arrests, sorry, cause it was Commissioner Rouskeneck asked a question about other drugs. Uh, you can see a breakdown on the pie chart showing the other drugs. Methamphetamine is clearly the driver to our system. Um, drugs and alcohol as a whole drive probably ninety-five percent of what we do, but methamphetamine just has a profound impact. Uh, care campus, um, it's an excellent partnership with Barry and his crew, the people from Health and Human Services. Uh, he helps us with a lot of the data collection, uh, the services to the clients in the facility. We've talked about the care campus a lot and of course, recently got the award from NACO, uh, Pennington County did for that. You know, almost twenty-seven thousand people through there. I think the important number is the twelve hundred and ninety-four admissions that were alternatives to incarceration. So instead of going to the county jail, they went through the care campus. Some people call that jail diversion, I call it system diversion. It saves public defender time, state's free time, court time and law enforcement time, so. Uh, and Barry has a number, I didn't bring it with me, as to the actual cost savings, I think we're approaching it's over the neighborhood of a million dollars, but I can follow up with you on that, um, in terms of savings by not sending people to the jail. So it's, it's real money and they're where they can get services if they want them rather than at the jail. Speaking of the jail, um, first I want to say thank you for the support on the jail laundry and kitchen. Uh, it's operational, it turned out very well. Um, thank you for the support to make that happen, the staff areas are uh, nice for the staff, they actually have a break area, they can actually get some sunlight and fresh air when they step outside the patio area, outside the uh, little break area they do have in the briefing room, so that's very appreciated. There's some of the numbers, you know, we'll run um, almost fourteen thousand people through there if you add the people itself turn in. Uh, warrants every week, uh, every day into those numbers, I mean, it'll be close to fourteen thousand people that uh, come through our hotel here at Pennington County and uh, we have done a lot of video court appearances, both with state court and federal court because of COVID nineteen. Hopefully some of that'll maintain, we don't lose a hundred percent of that, cause it makes it easier for us in terms of transport, creates some logistical challenges in the facility, but it's been a good way to um, still do the court and keep it continuing. I'll just plant a seed with you for now that uh, at some point here, one of the next upcoming meetings, we're gonna come potentially ask for some, adding some uh, correctional officers back into the budget. Um, both the state and federal numbers are gonna be increasing as we're both coming online. What you will see hopefully with, and I'll get the request put together and send it to you in advance, but um, they will pay for themselves plus give us some net revenue because these are largely paying customers that we're plusing out, mostly our federal uh, clients or inmates, so at some point, just planting a seed, have come back and ask for uh, probably five COs to be able to staff the pods as we increase our population, but again, they'll be funded, so. The juvenile services center, um, in twenty twenty now, our Bureau of Prisons numbers are down, which is our federal kids, um, which isn't down here, but it's just telling you anecdotally, right now, it's down, I think it'll continue to trend down in terms of the federal system has been shut down, Bureau of Prisons, so it's impacted both the adult population, the juvenile population, so there's not as many kids moving in the system, so our numbers otherwise have been fairly uh, static, fairly consistent. Um, again, this year, our painting company numbers are trending way up, I think it's a impact of no school and a variety of other things where, you know, busy hands are happy hands and kids are not in school and creating a lot of mischief, and so we're seeing the impact of that and there's some violent crime too, I mean, you're talking a lot of gun offenses, a lot of assaults, I mean, very serious offenses and uh, so it's changed the type of kid we have in the facility in terms of uh, higher risk. And we have a number of them that are waiting to go into uh, adult court on charges. Joe, what's that number we have?
We have, um, right now we have twelve out of the twenty-four.
Yeah, so twelve of the twenty-four Pennington County kids that are waiting to be, see if they get bound over to adult court. So it tells you the level of seriousness of the charges. Cool. Of course, that's Southern County Compact, our partners in western South Dakota, it's a, it's a good partnership, it's worked well for a lot of years. Um, against some other numbers, uh, Lutheran Social Services is our partner on the shelter care side, so a nonprofit we partner with to run that. Evening Reporting Center is a partnership with the city, county and schools, reps of various schools provide funding. And it's just a, it's a good partnership and you can see the numbers there. Volunteers, just want to give a shout out to our volunteers. We literally could not do what we do in terms of level of services without the volunteers. Um, last year, search and rescue had a, a record number of hours, that largely comes from the search for serenity and the search for uh, Larry, the missing elk hunter up near Deerfield and uh, of course, a lot of crashes, other searches for lost people. Um, wide variety of calls that they do, uh, JSC, the jail, our explorers, our chaplains, our seniors, just they provide tremendous uh, service to Pennington County and then just a shout out to the volunteer fire people, when it comes to the searches and some of the rescues we do, volunteer fires oftentimes they're alongside us, so.
Kevin, on, on your volunteers on our last meeting for the month, I seen they were way down, is it because a a lot of them are seniors or choosing to be, stay safe or?
Yeah, we, it's an impact of COVID, there's less people coming into the jail, we've cut off a lot of the programs in the jail for volunteers coming in, uh, our seniors aren't coming in to volunteer right now, so that's a COVID nineteen impact.
But you got a pretty good list, wherever you need them, you just give them a call or you?
Yeah, yeah, we can gin them back up, but it is a COVID nineteen impact.
Kevin, do we charge for inmate meals? I mean, do we char, how much do we charge each inmate? Or how, how, is that reimbursable, I mean, like?
Yeah.
They're going away for a long time or?
Yeah, we're, we're the.
How does the meal programs work?
You can only charge a sentence inmates per day.
Yeah, it's a, it's like a buck forty-three a meal, and there is a, a, a board cost and a meal cost for, uh, that we can charge to inmates. It's kinda like the judge talked about, most of ours are so indigent, our collection rate is very, very small. We, we work at it all the time, both through JSC and through the jail, trying to do our collections, but if you're in our facility and you're going to the pen for ten years, it's not like they're getting any money out of you.
So the state doesn't give you back money for taking care of someone that they know is gonna be put in the state for ten years or? Um, maybe, I don't know how it works, I haven't been to jail, but um, I just didn't know how, I, I knew when you guys were telling us how much each meal was, but I just didn't know how the process worked of how you charge people or?
But by statute, counties can charge inmates for jail costs, the challenge is collecting it. You know, so we, we do collect some, and I can get you those numbers of what we actually collect, but it's a, it's a low percentage.
Yeah, and I knew that, I just didn't know the process in which you do it. Um, I knew we probably didn't get reimbursed, I just didn't know, um, maybe that, I, I shouldn't say that, I didn't know if like, if they were going to federal prison, if they were going to state. going to state prison, if any of those costs were reimbursed back, or maybe returning or recidivism or anything else that was going on.
The cost falls on the individual, so if they go up to the state penitentiary or to the federal prison, it's, that cost, you know, rests with the individual, not to the facility they went to, so any reimbursement would come eventually from that individual, not from the facilities where they went, if that's what you're asking.
And if they went away for life or whatever, then it's just written off?
The next few slides, I want to talk about employee wellness and just workers' comp and just assaults on staff. Worked with Stephanie McCoy, our HR person, to talk about, or put together the data to give you an idea of what we deal with in terms of staff, and this is from January 2018, December 2019, so not quite two years worth of data. In that blue section, 31 individual employees assaulted to where they, and this is office-wide, where they needed medical treatment, and you can see some of those were assaulted on multiple occasions. And just in the JSC and the jail, 119 staff assaulted, and that includes things that maybe they didn't receive medical treatment, might have been a slimming case, or, you know, a shove or something else where they didn't require medical treatment. And Care Campus, you know, we respond over there routinely, us and the police department. If somebody's behavior is such that it escalates beyond what the staff can deal with, then law enforcement has to respond, and the reason we include that is it just shows you the number of times that the behavior has escalated beyond what Care Campus is able to handle. Generally, those people end up going to jail. And then 85 criminal charges were filed as a result of this activity, and 13 of those for a threat to officer and their family.
Kevin, have you shared those numbers before with us?
No, these are new numbers.
I appreciate that, because that kind of gives me a good idea of what's actually happening, you know, because I think we, we do know we do have problems with the Care Campus, but it also gives us an idea of what our employees are enduring during the year.
Yeah, you know, this is the first time we've done this in terms of impact on employees, and it comes out of the recent discussion about wellness, and Commissioner Drews was on a conference call with Stephanie and I and some other folks last fall, I guess, talking about, you know, PTSD and workers' comp, and then eventually some legislation, and there's a summer study coming up that we'll talk about, and I know Commissioner Drews has been very involved in that discussion from the county perspective as well. But this is one of our correctional officers that was assaulted, injury he sustained, and again, just some additional data, the employee injury claims, so of those claims, you know, caused by physical altercation with suspects or inmates or clients, and you can just kind of read through these on your own, but you can see we end up at the emergency room a lot, we end up with people with work restrictions as a result of those injuries. And some of those are, you get kicked, punched, bit, headbutted, on rare occasions you get shot at, you know, those sorts of things. So employee wellness, I wanted to spend a couple of minutes talking about this, because it is a topic that's finally gotten traction for all first responders, and oftentimes, other people in the community that are impacted by an event, it could be a natural disaster, and it might not be just first responders get impacted, but others in the community as well. But speaking specifically to first responders, in particular, law enforcement, we're kicking this program off in July. We have an existing, just to be transparent, we have an existing FTE and funding, so we're gonna take out of our hides, so to speak, bring this person on to be a full-time wellness coordinator working under Stephanie, and that includes mental, physical, environmental, spiritual, and financial wellness, and it's more than just how many push-ups can you do, it's, you know, how well do you take care of yourself as a whole? And I made this comment yesterday, we were meeting with law enforcement, met with the governor, and talking about statewide law enforcement issues, and you stay in this business long enough, you'll eventually see about everything one human being can do to another, and, you know, that takes a toll on first responders. And we talked about how officers respond, law enforcement responds on the street. If they don't take care of themselves, it can lead to them responding inappropriately, or inappropriately, you mentioned with excessive use of force or some other things, so it's critical, it's critical to take care of themselves for a lot of different reasons, their family, the agency they work for, the community, and so it's, it's something we're buying in 110% to. Staff's done a wonderful job putting this together, and we think it's gonna be very beneficial to our staff. And here's a sampling of some of the things we do with, that's one of our deputies after our pursuit, and the person had a young child in the vehicle, so she took custody of the child right away, was trying to comfort the child, but here's some of the things a deputy sees, certainly not all-inclusive, but if you look at the number of child pornography, child abuse, domestic violence, egg assaults, accidents with fatalities, suicides, autopsies, you know, the coroner cases, there's a little sampling of what our, our day is like, and, you know, day in, day out. So if you don't take care of yourself, this will take a toll on you, so it's important to do that. The state is looking at this as well, and again, I know Commissioner Drews was engaged in this as part of the legislative process last year. There was a summer study created to look at first responders and PTSD, and one of the things they're wrestling with is, should PTSD be, I guess, allowed under workers' comp? Am I saying that right?
Right.
Is a condition under workers' comp, or should we do more training or provide other services? You know, what's the solution to take care of all of our first responders? And again, that's, that's everybody, that's the volunteer people, that's the full-time people, fire EMS, law enforcement, so that's, that's all included in there, but there's a summer study, we'll have at least one or two people from Pennington County, hopefully, on that summer study, we submitted names to the executive board of the legislature, and so that'll, we'll see where that goes. So it's a statewide issue. Staff summary, this is the summary per your request. We have 421.5 full-time FTEs. When you take the part-time staff, you worked with Holly and used your formula, that actually counts up to 432. If you take our 421 hours, or 421 staff times 2,080 hours, that actually gives us a bank of 876,000 employee hours to work with throughout the year. Even if they're part-time staff, we're generally a little bit under that, just because of turnovers, you have salvage and hours that aren't used, but, so anyway, that's the breakdown and per your guidelines. Budget numbers, we're just about done, so we're getting there. I always include these, these are my self-searching slides, just reminded that we do, these are general fund cuts that we take out of our budget, so when you come and ask for more, you know, we got to the point where we're cutting to the bone, because we've done voluntary reductions over the years, sometimes at commission request, sometimes voluntarily, we've cut, this is just general funds, so we've been frugal trying to help keep the budget ship afloat. And then one thing we have the opportunity to do for the county is collect revenues, and some of it comes from underspent budget, largely comes from over-collective revenues, and we're trying to be very entrepreneurial about that, so you can see over the last few years, a little over $9 million collected, so that again, helps the county come first. The expenditures or comparisons you have in front of you and the revenue, so I don't know, I'll just end there, if you've got questions, we can talk about those or any specific line items. We followed the budget guidelines, I think we got it right, Cindy, where it was no increases except the Gallagher costs were layered in, and I think that was 370,000 if I recall correctly, so.
Kevin, I appreciate the, again, the grant breakdown, just like I'm a state attorney Vargos, that kind of shows us what kind of grants are out there, and maybe what programs are coming forward, or FTEs that might be moving forward from the grant, so.
And we did apply for a grant for the wellness position, we just haven't heard yet, so if we get that, that would be some additional revenue, and we're allowed for that in our budget, you'll see some additional revenue allowed in there, that's for that grant if we get it.
Kevin, I think it's, I just want to applaud whoever was responsible for getting the summer study started, it's long overdue.
Yeah.
Talked about that at the volunteer fire meeting we had last year, that there, that our fire EMS and sheriffs, officer, law enforcement officers are overlooked when it comes to the mental strain that it puts on them.
I agree.
Thank you.
I agree, Commissioner DeSanto, I think it's well overdue, and they're probably finding more and more studies, not even having to do it through the state, that that has affected many of our first responders in many ways, over many years. I mean, there's, whether people think, sometimes it's, there's going to war, and then there's the war on the streets, so both of those are pretty harsh on people's mentality, so we appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Cindy, anything else that you'd like to share today?
Thank you, guys, for all you do.